And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of city engineer.
The duties of city engineer.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Well, thank you. I appreciate the warm welcome. It's been a great week and a half, couple days so far. I'm very excited to meet all the residents and get to know you and try to help you as much as I can. And I am very honored and excited for this new opportunity. And I really hope I can do as good of a job as Cindy. Honestly. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
See you for lunch.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Picture. Don't sit down. He's thrilled to be here.
Or you get some exercise this evening, right?
All right.
So Trevor's a new addition to the city. He's a new position, a position that we've really been trying to look out for recently. And it's time. So we're ready. And Trevor is here with his beautiful family, his wife Jess, son's name, Enzo. Enzo, they're here tonight. They're already residents of the city. So we're happy to have them aboard. He is, he was a, not quite superintendent yet of a golf course, assistant golf course. So he's, he's got a lot of background, a lot of licensing and he'll just, he'll bring a special spark and a special eye to the city. Pleasure to have you.
I did it.
You just say we need it.
Well, we need, okay. So his, his main priority, he will work with Public Works and he will work with us in the winter to maintain the roads and pile streets and things like that. But his main focus during the summer is he's going to spruce up the downtown. He's going to just, you know, go through everything. We don't like the clutter that is left overnight sometimes. Sometimes we have some wild nights here, I guess. And you know, there's special things that need done. So he's got the eye for it. So that's what we were looking for.
So you'll see it around downtown.
Right.
And so if we, just so Trevor and family know, we, we do this because otherwise council would not necessarily know who our new employees are. We don't see you at meetings and you wouldn't necessarily know who we are. So when you see us walking around downtown, you might, now you'll recognize us. And I don't think we're going to have any trouble with you. You grew up in Loveland. You must recognize the Sora name. His family's been here forever. And as your boss here said, you all moved back to Loveland. I'm just impressed with the, Trevor loves this city. So I think that it's going to be a huge addition for our downtown to have somebody really taking care of them.
Stick around after, I'll shoot.
That's everybody. Okay. You ready? All right. I state your name.
I, Trevor Sora.
solemnly swear that I will.
solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Loveland.
Of the City of Loveland.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of groundskeeper.
The duties of groundskeeper.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Want to say thank you for the opportunity. Like Mayor Bailey said, I've lived here my whole life. And I'm excited that I get to be a part of taking care of making it look better every single day. So, thank you. Glad you're here. Yep. Very nice to meet you.
Perfect. And?
Welcome. Oh, no.
Because the bridge is out.
Yeah.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Louis G. Rockwood Community Service Volunteer Award Presentation. Would Gary Giver please join me? So I was honored to nominate Gary Giver for the 2024 Louis G. Rockwood Community Service Volunteer Award. At the Loveland Stage Company, Gary serves as house manager and on the board of directors. Like everything he does, he goes far beyond the requirements to ensure comfort and a pleasant experience for the patrons and the theater. He is also the stage company's committee leader for capital improvement. In this position in 2024, Gary founded and spearheaded the Loveland Stage Company Music Series. Can we come in and close? All right. So founded the, and spearheaded this company music series, which has been very well attended, I do believe. I've heard nothing but good things. Neil would attest to that, Mr. Ori. In addition, he's bringing the Loveland Shorts Film Festival, which I think he's going to talk about today, which is a weekend of short films by independent, local, national, and international filmmakers scheduled for August 2nd and 3rd of this year. In addition, you might have seen Gary and his wife Becky walking in, walking on State Route 48, carrying a bag and picking up trash to help keep our community beautiful and clean. They've been part of this adopt a block program for years. And in their spare time, Gary and Becky take care of the bird feeders at the East Loveland Nature Preserve. Gary truly cares about our city and its people, and he helps make a better community for all of us and for future generations. So congratulations. Bet this is really cool. But I don't know.
Very cool.
There you go.
Wow.
There you go. And his name is forever in our hallway etched on the award. There you go. So you have a few words to say?
Sure. Well, Kathy, thank you. And as I've said since Misty called me about the award, I'm just truly humbled to receive this. So, you know, thank you for nominating, thank, thank the city. But, you know, also receiving the award should be, I, I've got a cast of characters behind me, you know, supporting me with the music series. You know, if you'd stand up, people are involved in the music series, Becky and Becky, Tim and Kay. You know, I mean, they're key in bringing this to Loveland. I mean, it's really cool. We've sold out almost every performance so far and we continue to do this. With the film festival, again, I'm just a small part of that whole thing. I've got a whole team, 16 people. But the people that are involved in that team, they'd stand up also just to get recognized for the work you're doing. Thanks so much. And I'm going to talk about the film festival here in another couple of minutes where I'll elaborate on that a little bit. But again, Kathy, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
All of council, everybody voted.
This is an honor. So thank you.
This is always.
It's not the Kettering Police Department, so we're good.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Business Enhancement Award. Vice Mayor will present that.
Sure. And let me call up Kate Harton. Her husband Shane is with her tonight. Shane, good to see you. The Business Enhancement Award is given annually by the city to a business in city of Cincinnati, of Loveland, I shouldn't say Cincinnati, that demonstrates an increase in business, increase in the number of employees on the payroll, and exhibits effort to enhance the aesthetics of the property through a combination of renovation, building additions, painting, or beautification projects. And I think the 1859, which is this year's award winner, fills all the criteria in spades. The 1859, if you don't know, is located at 111 South 3rd Street, just a stone's throw away from here. It's the old Presbyterian Church that was founded in 1859. The building still stands and it's beautiful. It was, I think, the home of the Loveland Presbyterian Church for, I don't know, almost 100 years. They built a place out on Miamiville Road, Loveland Miamiville Road. I think it was occupied by the Church of God for a number of years. And then in 2013, Kate and Shane acquired this historic property. In, in 2014, they moved into it, made it their home as they embarked on a multi-year effort to beautify the property into what it is now, which is unquestionably one of Loveland's most beautiful buildings and grounds. The project began with a complete demolition of the interior of the building, including taking the walls down to the studs and renovating the electrical and plumbing. The sanctuary was turned into a large event space and a kitchen was added along with an outdoor patio a few years later. More recently, Kate is operator of the 1859, has opened a bed and breakfast unit in the adjoining former schoolhouse building, which dates back to the 1830s, I think. Let's see. Recently also, they renovated or reconstructed the bell tower. It works. The bell sounds beautiful. And added a spotlight at nighttime. And then finally, in this past fall, they basically re-landscape the front of the property. Their hard work and meticulous renovations have resulted in truly a premier space for weddings, meetings, general events, right here in downtown Loveland. And just as, my impressions of the, what makes the building so special and the place so special is just the beauty and charm, both inside and outside it. Outside, trees and flowers are there. The landscaping's there. The patio also is, is green with flowers. Inside, there's a vaunted ceiling as soon as you walk in and just there's a very warm feeling and atmosphere inside the building. Kate makes sure that visitors get a five-star experience and that they leave with what she calls best possible memories. So the care and efforts of Kate and Shane and her staff have been noticed, especially by wedding professionals who have given the 1859 a Best of Weddings Venue Award, as well as the coveted Couples Choice Award. Kate's a member of the Little Miami River Chamber of Alliance. I think last year was Businesswoman of the Year. So we're glad that we can award this plaque and it will be yours to hang. And then there's a plaque also outside in the hallway that your, the 1859's name will be. So congratulations.
Wow, I'm blown away. When Ted came and interviewed me, I was just very humbled and honored to be receiving this. There's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears gone into that building and many years of hard work. We're so honored to have restored that historic building and to have kept it. Actually, at one point, before we acquired it, was potentially slated to be torn down. So we are very honored to be a part of saving that historic property. And never would have guessed the journey that we would have gone on when we purchased it in 2013, that today it's this thriving wedding and event venue with just tons of clients coming in to experience the magic of Loveland. And I'm super, super grateful to my husband for being my greatest champion. There's many people behind the scenes that have made this happen, specifically renovation specialist JR Thomas Landscaping. Very grateful to the city for the support and the chamber and just the way, all the things that you do for businesses. So thank you so much.
All right. Gary Giver, open forum. Yep.
You're lucky. You get me twice tonight. But I do want to talk about the film festival. I try to be brief, but it's hard for me to be brief about the film festival because it is such an exciting event. So it was in January of 2023, I got this idea about bringing the film festival into Loveland. And I actually emailed Mayor Bailey and Dave Kennedy and said, hey, what do you think about this off-the-wall idea about a film festival? International Film Festival, independent films? And their response back was, hey, great idea. It would bring just a whole different vibe into the city. So off we went. So I formed a team and initially there were seven members of the team and now we're up to 16. But the film festival will be August 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. It'll be short independent films, short being 20 minutes or less. And we are on a platform called Film Freeway, so we're accepting films internationally. So we actually have one from Moscow, Russia, that's really, really good. So will it make the film? Don't know, because we're currently screening the films that are coming in. And a panel will decide what goes into the festival on those two days. So what you're going to expect, and I'll just give one day as, as an example. On Friday, we're starting at the Coffee Hour Hometown Cafe. And then we'll come back and we'll probably do a workshop. Some of our workshops, one is makeup for horror films. So Christina Cecilianna, who does makeup at Kings Island, she will be leading that workshop. Then we'll do a block of films. It'll be a 90-minute block. And then go to lunch, come back from lunch, there'll be another workshop. And then an afternoon screening of films and then an evening screening of films. And then depending on, we're still trying to figure this out, we plan to do an after-hours party at one of the local establishments. So that's what you can expect during the film festival. But as a first-year film festival, we were a little concerned about how do we get the word out? You know, how do we make filmmakers aware of what we're bringing to Loveland and what they can expect? So we did a promo video. And so this will be my last piece that I'll save, but I'll let Dave turn it on. And it's a promo video about Loveland and the film festival. So Dave, when you're ready. And one thing I did forget to mention was this Sunday, we're having a launch party slash fundraiser at Ramsey's Trailside. Starts at 5 o'clock, goes to 8 o'clock. We've got some awesome raffle prize, prizes. At this point, I know that Elvis will be in the house, Freddie Mercury, Dolly Parton, Barbie, and Marilyn Monroe. So come, get your pictures taken with them at our Step and Repeat, which is a screen with our logo on it, like they do at the Oscars. And it'll be a good time, be a great time. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So anybody would like to go now? We'll give you a moment. All right. Next we have Mark Medler. I'm excited to hear it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So just Thursday, we were informed by the Government Finance Officers Association that we have received the 2024 Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for a budget that you approved. We, even though we do math for a living, it's hard to keep track of all these awards that we're getting. I believe this was 11. That's right. No pressure. Just got to keep this rolling. So 11 years in a row. So the most important thing to remember this one was this was the first year of using their new budgeting software, the ClearGov system. So there was a lot of learning, a lot of trial and error, maybe a few gruff words as we were trying to figure things out. But the team did very well together. Mr. Kennedy, Charles Bastin, the Assistant Finance Director was involved. And I even had, I believe Becky was involved trying to go in and see if she could break some things and see if we could fix it. So there was a whole lot of time spent with the software. And at the end of the day, I think we were all better for it. We learned a lot. When the Finance Commission was looking at the budget, we typically took three meetings to get the budget ironed out and ready to go. But because of all the time that we saved using this software, we were able to get it done in two. So there was less time tinkering around and trying to fix equations and all these little formatting things. And we could actually spend time doing analysis. How about that? So that's just a long way to say very thankful for council and their support and getting the software up online. And the, the interactive abilities of it that you can see on the website at any time are really helpful. Again, thank you. We're very pleased. And we'll be back next year with number 12.
Okay. Very good. We do kind of take it for granted because it's been 11 years, but that, but we shouldn't because it is a lot of time and effort and work that goes into it. And I think sometimes we take you for granted because you just are a steady ship that keeps us, keeps us on track. But we do appreciate everything you and your team do and congratulations for this. Okay. Next, the review and approval of the minutes from the April 9th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Does anybody have any changes or additions?
Move to approve is written.
Sir Second, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Motion carries 70.
Mr. Kennedy?
So the city has four elevated water towers. On three of those towers, Oakland, also known as White Pillars, Commerce Park, and Union Cemetery, we have macro cellular antennas with leases, two with Verizon and one with T-Mobile. We have no antennas or cellular antennas on the Leader Park Tower. So the leases all vary. All the lease revenue that we receive from our, from the cellular towers, we split equally 50/50 between Water Capital Improvement Fund and the General Fund. Technology has changed. Technology has changed pretty significantly, significantly in that world. Most of that was with the advent of the 5G micro sites and which in 2030, they're predicting there will be 6G sites. Through all of that, the macro towers, which are the big towers, either mounted on poles or mounted on tall structures such as we have, they have, they have diminished somewhat in their value to the companies. Using, actually using Sprint as their guide, who didn't manage their infrastructure, as they would call it. Using, actually using Sprint as their guide, who didn't manage their infrastructure, as they would call it, and went out of business with thirty billion dollars in debt. You're seeing these companies, Verizon and the other companies, working hard to finagle every possible savings in their infrastructure, as they would call it, out there with their towers. With that led to, the city was approached mid-March by some Verizon representatives. They wanted to discuss our lease on the tower, Oakland Road Tower, better known as White Pillars. And we're fairly frank with the city that they were giving us some options. Our current lease with them technically goes through 2032. Although they were very quick to point out that that lease, once they got past the first term, can be, that, that lease can be terminated by Verizon for the cost of eleven thousand ninety-four dollars. That's hanging there on that current terms, current number, based upon their options on how they can get out of the lease. And it's very wide open. They can simply say, this no longer serves the technological needs, we don't want it anymore. So this is the epitome of a, this whole situation, which I dragged Chris in, I bounced it off Kathy, was the epitome of burden-hand of whether or not the city wanted to take the option. Because they're basically, they're opting to the city. They, our current lease payment is eighteen forty-nine a month. That goes up to 2027 through the final five-year term. They're offering the city one thousand two hundred dollars. They want to renegotiate one thousand two hundred per month, commencing on one twenty-four with every five years with six renewal terms. Again, it has, after the first term, they can get out for six times the month payment. So, but they're also offering the city a one-time prepayment of two hundred sixty thousand dollars for forty years. So the questions, the banging are back and forth, and I will say there have been, of posing questions and getting their answers is, they are working hard to simply, I said to Paul, do you have any thoughts that by any stretch of imagination, you'll still have a tower up there in forty years? He goes, no, very unlikely. Technology will keep, continue to advance, but it helps us secure that site. You can take the two sixty if you want. We then, if we do have it, will experience longer-end payments on the back end. So it makes sense. So back and forth, back and forth, and we went throughout the week. And ultimately, I don't know that it's worth the risk that at any point in time, for about eleven thousand dollars, we can, our lease can be terminated and we would have left two hundred sixty thousand. Doing the math a little bit, if we would accept the twelve hundred dollar a month rent. If we go at the sixteen and a half years, at sixteen and a half years, anything before that, any termination before that, we made money on the deal. Anything after that, we're on their dime. Sixteen and a half years is 2040. Will technology be at a point in 2040 where that tower will no longer be needed and will be terminated? And could basically be abandoned? If it's abandoned for five years, the lease is null and void. So basically, what you pay us to do, our recommendation is that at this point in time, it would be best to secure the two hundred sixty thousand dollar, take that money in our hands. Whoever's here in 2040, you can say, make a comment on whether or not we made the right decision. But I just spent a lot of time on the internet, a lot of time back and forth with the Verizon group. And it feels to me this is the right decision to move forward. And with that, and we'll sort of circle back to this a little bit. But to me, I think it's timely for the city because as we continue down this path, as we continue down the path for PFOS remediation, we're at a point right now where two hundred sixty thousand dollars, as we go from the sort of wrapping up the planning stage and going into the technical design stage, this would be very timely. So General Fund will be giving up half of their share of this with it going into, to be focused on that funding. So I feel like at that point in time, this would be the best recommendation for the city to take the two sixty. There's no funding contingencies. We get it almost immediately. Solicitor Joe and I had bantered back about whether or not this would be a two-part process where you would also approve the easement that would come from this. But there is so many open spaces with that. I would, I would elect to bring that back. It could be as soon as the next meeting. We'll not have a memo on it. I just feel it's a little cleaner for us, and Joe agrees, for us to bring that easement back separately. But I just can't envision that in 2040, that that tower is still going to be up there. So with that, I think that taking the two sixty is a better deal for the city.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Hart?
As you're talking, a question occurred to me. Once the lifespan of this tower is done, is over with, who is responsible for taking it down?
They are, comes from my heart, they, they are responsible. It's in our existing, it's in our existing, our existing easement. And it, and I, Councilmember Goodyear asked me a question, why are, what we have now is a lease? And why do we have what we would be getting as an easement, which was a good question? All the terms of the, that's why I wanted you to see the draft. It's got a lot of blank spaces on what you'll be ultimately approving. The real difference, I'm just reading what this guy from Verizon. Dave, the real difference is only that there is a third party involved. So while a lease would be just between Party One and Party Two, the city and Verizon, the easement adds in another party, which is the funding. The people that are basically fronting all the money for Verizon, they're gambling in this too. So otherwise, all, all conditions of the easement are transferred into the lease into different language and they were responsible for removing it. So, but they're also, once you got past that first five-year term, the way our easement is written, there's three conditions upon termination. They can terminate it pretty simply after five years with six times rent. So at eleven hun, twelve hundred dollars, do the math, we're, we're stuck. So I, I just don't like risking city money, especially at a time where we have a perfect fit for the new, for the utilizing funds.
No, it makes perfect sense, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Ping?
I have a couple of questions. One inherent talks about this being a non-exclusive agreement, not the letter of intent, but the, the final agreement is not exclusive. I presume that that means that if some other telecommunications company comes along, we can do something as well, correct?
Yes, we can add anyone and they can expand theirs without, that's in the original. They, we can add Cricket, I'm just making that up. And we could add Cricket. We can do whatever we want, adding more people to the tower.
Okay. And you already said the same conditions are basically coming in. I can't find it here quickly glancing through it, but when I was reading through it before, somewhere there was a comment about a fairly large height on this of hundreds of feet that they had rights to or something like that. And my, my question is, they're saying right now that it's unlikely that in forty years' time, they'll even need this thing. But the way technology works, in forty years, it could be just as likely there's something else that they need. It's a totally different thing that sticks up off the water tower a hundred feet if we give them this easement. So my, my question, I guess, is just more from a standpoint of, do we have any control over them after the easement's given? Or is it just, if it says you can go two hundred feet above the tower, then they can do that? And I'm thinking more just from aesthetic standpoint than anything else of that type of thing. And like I said, I can't find it here.
They can't make any modifications to the existing tower without coming back to the city. I actually had reached out to him because all of a sudden I thought, wait a second, you're not being sneaky with that ninety-nine years that he has in there? And he said, Dave, that is just, that's an overall template. That's the same thing we use for monopoles, standalone poles. Those are, those are typically for ninety-nine years. For water tanks and rooftops, we do forty years. So that's, he's, he's given, another reason, I really didn't want you to approve that. There's, that is a very boilerplate document that they use. So.
So the approval tonight is just for a letter of intent to say, yes, we're interested in it, but then there'll be a follow-up.
Yes, I will come back to you with the formal language of the easement, which is the, it's an agreement for them to purchase an easement because of the third party that is fronting the money. That's the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
And then, Mr. Kennedy, if you could just talk a little bit about what the expectation would be with what we do with the two hundred sixty thousand in terms of budget allocation?
Yes, we would make, so I wanted to tell you, and I, and I mean this with all, with all honesty, and I'm not saying this, but you've, you've just seen in the last two-minute meetings, the city hire and fill three very important positions to existing in one new position. And I think that one of the things that I, everything comes with a, with a side benefit. But I can honestly tell you in the very brief period of time that Chris has been on board, he grabbed hold of our PFOS remediation as far as educating himself on everything we are to this point, which I felt feels been some pretty significant progress and has ran with it. I think the, that, that is very timely and it's almost as important, is equally as important as having this funding to move forward. I, I think, I think to be able to, to take this money at this time to me is serendipitous because I think it comes at a great time. I, I was very apprehensive about it when I thought it was all water fund, but Mark had to remind me this is fifty-fifty. And I thought, well, this isn't as big of a hit to the water fund as I initially had thought over the course of the money. Because you realize they walk on a tight, tight dime. But I think the seed, Chris's efforts to move forward, to begin with the design phase is, is critical. And I just think, I, I just think that's the best use of this and that we would earmark that. And you'll see what's on legislation after Chris later to that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll go ahead and read the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of intent with MD seven for telecommunications easement at the Oakland Road Water Tower.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Winich?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Council. I have a memorandum in front of you. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the United States Environmental Protection, Protection Agency announced the proposed creation of a new national primary drinking water regulation, which revolved around PFOS, which is polyfluoralecyllic substances. These are also known as forever chemicals, is what is the common term. PFOS, they're a category of manufactured chemicals that have been in use in the industry and consumer products since the nineteen forties. PFOS have characteristics that make them useful in a variety of products, including non-stick cookware, waterproof clothing, firefighting foam, and other manufacturing processes. On April tenth, to follow this up, April tenth of twenty twenty-four, so just twelve days ago, the U.S. EPA announced the final national primary drinking water regulation for PFOS, which identified what the maximum contaminant levels can be in your finished drinking water. The city of Loveland, we have already started the process of studying the, studying this, basically the treatment process that would need to go into place to treat for these chemicals. We are under contract with Burgess and Niple, a well, well-known engineering firm. They are already moving through that process. And this, what we're, what we're talking about today is the ability for staff and the city manager to apply for funding for that study. That study was already approved and we're already under contract. However, we have the ability to go back and apply for a, through EPA's Division of Environmental and Financial Assistance, also known as DIFA, for a water supply revolving loan account, basically a grant as part of their program year 2025. We are under contracts, the contract value is forty-six thousand five hundred. And what we're asking the Council today is to approve a resolution that allows us to apply for that reimbursement. This, this will be, you will see several iterations of us coming to you for potential grant, grant monies. We're going to, you will see, once we finish the study phase and get a final study completed, we will move directly into design phase. And then following the design phase, we will move into construction. At each point, study, design, and construction, we have the ability to apply for funding. And we will pursue those opportunities through this, this revolving loan account, which is basically grant money. It's not, even though it's called a loan program, it is grant monies. This is a very important, important program to continue moving forward with because, as you know, the monies unfortunately are not there for everyone. All right, it's, it's going to run out very quickly. So we want to continue moving forward with this process and keep, keeping on the forefront of it. So today, basically the resolution that's in front of you is to basically accept, accept the ability for the city manager to apply for those, those, those grant monies.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Hart?
Based on your experience in your pre, with your previous employer, and you kind of mentioned this in your comments, being on the forefront. Would you say that at this point in time, we are ahead of a lot of communities in terms of where we are with this process?
So I like to look at us, I like to look at us as part of the Little Miami corridor. There's a, you can see a obvious distinction of the communities that start from Wilmington and work their way down Little Miami Aquifer down to the Ohio River. We're all basically seeing the same numbers. The tip, the constituent we all see is PFOS. So you'll see a bunch, there's probably six different constituents that they've, they've identified. All of us, which includes the city of Loveland, Western Water, city of Milford, you got Indian Hill, Kings Island, and city of Wilmington, we're kind of all in the same pocket. All of the communities except for Warren County are about in the same position where they're in the study period. Warren County is the one that I would say is a little ahead. But we are basically in the same position as the other communities that surround us. In fact, we will be having, I started this a couple of years ago with Warren County, but I like to call it kind of the Little Miami PFOS Roundtable. We'll be having another meeting with all of those communities that I just mentioned to go over where everyone stands and what, what opportunities we all can kind of collaborate on to get ourselves in a good position to get the funding we need. So to answer that question, Councilman Hart, we are, I would say we are right in line with most of the communities in our corridor.
Any other comments or questions? All right, want to read the resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for funding from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, Division of Environmental and Financial Assistance through the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account for program year two thousand twenty-five for assistance with the planning, design, and construction of treatment for emerging contaminants.
Thank you, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy?
So I, following suit of what city council did with the creation of the WMR fund. And we did that for a very distinct reason because both from internal bookkeeping and internal accounting and to be able to track as the money came in from the WMR to the penny and show expenditures out, we, we were discussing, Chris and Mark and I, about the, the benefits of creating a PFOS remediation fund. This fund would of course immediately accept the two hundred sixty thousand from the Verizon. It would accept all the different dollars from DIFA, that's the city. We've made no secret about the fact that we joined multiple municipalities in the lawsuit against the manufacturers of PFOS. We are starting to see that settlements coming our way. This is the perfect landing zone. It makes a lot of sense to have a PFOS. There are certain grants that over the years that we've seen that very specifically require it to go into a minimum, a specific line item. But we just feel for internal accounting, for the benefit of the grants, just to account what will be a significant project, that it would make sense for us to simply create a PFOS fund to accept all the revenue, to easily account for all of the expenditures. Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven oh five twelve specifically requires that. We can't just sit around here and go, hey, let's create a fund. We come to council with legislation through the resolution. We come to council with legislation through the resolution that is presented to the city. Mark then is authorized to establish that fund, just like the WMR. It's transparent, it helps us internally and it's good for grants and all funding.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Kennedy, I just assume if, if this would be like the Water Main Fund where it's the exclusive use of the money can be for PFOS remediation, not, nothing else?
Oh, exactly, yeah, just, I would, it'll be a six, it'll start with a six. That's the water is sixty-one, sixty-two and PFOS is sixty-seven. And so it'll be a six, that helps us for Mark's sort of chart of accounts. And no expenditures out of it, except for obviously anything related to our remediation designs for X period of time, and then ultimately it'll go towards construction. But when the, when the judgments start coming, as they are from the, the city, the city's involvement in the lawsuits, this is the perfect place to have them. You don't want those just thrown into the general fund, not that Mark can't account for them, it's just much cleaner.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution establishing a PFOS remediation fund. Call the roll, please. Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey? Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-eight is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Medler?
Thank you, Mayor. Where you have the first quarter financial results that were reviewed by the Finance Commission at their meeting last week. So just kind of comparing the first quarter of twenty-four to twenty-three, we have a lot less as far as revenues and expenditures, that was to be expected mostly because last year the Chestnut Project was going strong and there were a lot of millions of dollars being spent cleaning up that site. So we knew things were going to be back off this quarter. It's also lower than last year because we have not yet received a lot of our property tax revenue from the counties. For whatever reason, you know, sometimes that fluctuates between either March or April when we receive that based on the treasurers from the three countings that we're in. Last year we got that money in March, this year we're going to get it later this month in April. And the, the biggest one that we always look at is income tax, of course. We were pretty aggressive with our estimate for this year. And twenty-three, we came just short of seven million, it was about six point eight. Our original estimate for this year was going to be seven and a quarter. Things didn't go quite as rosy in January. January was a little bit behind where it was the year before. Things are starting to tick up a little bit in February and March. So right now I'm thinking we'll probably be a little closer to seven million for this year. Again, we'll keep track of that as we go throughout the year. May is a, was a pretty big year last year, it was close to a million dollars last year. If we can compare to that, we're really going to know where we're going to be. We do have a lot of potential savings to offset any potential reduction in income tax. There are a lot of projects that, while it goes through the special projects funds, a lot of the revenue comes from the general. So by having some projects that might not be happening this year, we'll realize some savings there and we'll definitely finish with a balanced budget for this year.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to approve the quarterly update.
So moved.
Check.
Thank you, call the roll, please. Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. You did have another memo, did you want to talk about that one or?
It's, since it's income tax related, we discussed that, that would be repetitive. I believe that you have the information that you need.
Okay. All right, I don't think we have anything else. And I don't have anything to report other than what Gary Giver talked about, five o'clock at Ramsey's on Sunday. Does anybody else have anything to report? We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Very seven.